Good evening everyone, I'm excited, a month went by really fast, so this is a brand new series. I have started just in an effort to kind of force myself and everyone else out there to sit down and be creative and to use those art supplies that we don't really get to that we buy and we always want to try. So last month I did this Valentine project, I've been wanting to try some gouache, so that's what I used last month. This month I pulled these out. They are just some pastels, like I said, they've been in the the art cupboard for some time, I have never used them, they're just the set from Hobby Lobby but I've been wanting to try them, so I'm gonna find a way to incorporate these tonight and I have no plan, I just pulled out one of my recipes again that I like, I'm gonna do rolo cookies, I don't know if you ever had those? Well they're really yummy, you put a rolo inside, so they're nice and caramelly. But no plan, I'm just going to be creative off the cuff and use some supplies and if you're just joining in or watching the recording, you can grab any supplies you have or want to use, even just a pencil and find a recipe to illustrate and then over on our Facebook page, we have a post where we are going, where well we have been putting up the like a virtual recipe exchange, so if you go to the Facebook page, Simple Lettered Studio, right at the top you'll find a pinned post that says "virtual recipe exchange", where we can put all of our samples in if you're up for sharing your design. So thanks for joining in and I'm just kinda gonna chat and tell you what's going through my head while I design. So I've got my blank canvas, oh I am using, this is just a sketchbook, it is not watercolor, I think it was, let me remember, this was mixed media, so it can work, it works with watercolor. Obviously not super saturated, but I did use a mixed media sketchbook so that we could do all sorts of things for our cookie and calligraphy nights. Okay, so I want to put a title in. I pulled out also these gold flakes because you know rolos have that gold foil wrappers, I was like, ooh, that could be a fun thing to tie in, so my head is going to be spinning, how I could use this? I was kind of thinking of doing maybe a border, which I think I like that idea. So I'm just gonna start sketching maybe about about a one inch border. It kinda reminds me of, I don't know if you're like a children's book fan, but if you don't notice about me, I used to teach preschool and kindergarten and I am very much a children's book fan. So if you know like the book, books, like Gingerbread Baby and the Mitten by Jan Brett. She was always been one of my favorite authors and illustrators even as a young child and then when I taught kindergarten and have had kids of my own, this definitely definitely one of my favorite artists and she always puts in the borders like fun little illustrations, so this is kinda what that reminds me of. So I just kinda sketched, you know, just, it's not perfect, but I'm thinking a one inch border. Okay, sorry, I was just looking at my list here. Okay, and then I want to do a title, so I think I'm gonna do a banner. I don't know if we need it too fancy, but and while I'm here, I get a lot of questions about my pencil, it's a pretty popular one in the lettering community, I learned about it when I was learning cursive because I just, you can get it in .3, .5, obviously it's like a graphing pencil, so you can get it in a lot of different weights, but this is the .5 graphic here from Pentel, love it, the eraser is very small, but I also use this Tombow Mono Zero Eraser, I like the rectangle one. Okay, so I'm gonna add a banner here, I don't know how big I want it, but like I said, we have no plan, we are just here for having fun sketching a design. I always seem to mix up the ribbon here, so we can that part would be shaded in, like that. Where the ribbon folds, it always takes a few tries to get the folds right in proportion. Whoops, that was cut off, sorry about that. So I definitely wanna see if you illustrate a recipe, either drop it in the recipe exchange or tag me on social media, Simple Lettered Studio and show what you made. I try and keep these at about an hour. The last one, when I used the gouache, I couldn't quite get done in an hour, but I went back and finished what I could, so I'm kinda overlapping my border and then in here I am going to do probably just a more actually, I kind of think I want like a serif font. And I don't have my exemplar out for Roman capitals, but this would be a fun place to do Roman capitals, so I'm just kinda gonna okay, and then I might do a more like modern brush lettering for the ingredients, but I kinda like this layout so far. So we've got our don't really love the shape of this ribbon, but I'll fix that when I decide exactly what I'm going to ink it with. Okay, rolo cookies, something kinda like that and then I'm gonna wanna put my ingredients in. There's not many, I don't know if you've made these, but these are like one of the cake mix cookies, where you just use a cake mix, so I think I'm just gonna eyeball this. Except I kinda like the lines in the design, I don't know. That could make it look like a recipe card, which is kind of cute. So I might do those all the way across and decide if I like that. Let's see, one, two, three, four, it only has four ingredients and then I will probably do like one space to write the instructions and a couple lines for instructions. Okay. I don't know how far I need to go down, but we'll see that. Okay, so I've got my cookies, see, I think that the lines kind of could be part of the design, but not completely sure. Okay, rolo cookies and brought out my brush pens, I was thinking I could use this Tombow, this is the brown, but I'm not sure the color. I have my scratch paper here, I'll kinda see what it looks like, it's a lighter brown. I don't know, yeah, maybe do that. And I think I might just go with black for the title, let me grab my fine liner. I used this last month also, I've been loving this Pitt Artist Pen by Favorite Castelle, so maybe I will outline the ribbon. This is the fine tip, comes in a couple different, but okay, yeah, just a nice outline, we could add some shade in where the ribbon bends. And then go back and do my serif lettering. It's not perfect, but I kind of am just going for like a more playful, not necessarily a specific script. Just kinda did the curved leg here to match the curve on the add a tiny bit of weight to those. So if you're new here watching along, my name's Cheyenne, I am the artist, lettering artist and calligrapher behind Simple Lettered Studio. I travel and do events, I teach classes and my favorite thing is our monthly subscription box, so every month I send out a subscription box and I was kinda born from teaching my in-person classes. A lot of people were saying, I just, I don't have the accountability when I go home to keep practicing or for me, I live in like a really rural area, there's not much here, we have a Walmart and a TJ Maxx. So if that's you, also tell me that it sounds like your town, TJ Maxx, we do have a Jo-Ann Fabrics, but it's like a really small Jo-Ann Fabrics and it's really just mostly the fabrics, the art section is pretty minimal. So I wasn't able to get supplies in town and so those that were taking my in-person classes also wanted to continue to find supplies and high-quality supplies, ones that you know you would actually want to use in your lettering projects, so in an effort to keep my students accountable and in an effort to provide tools that I have used and I love and recommend, I send out a subscription box each month and then also reached my lettering friends in Oklahoma where I started my business, I started in Oklahoma and then moved back to Utah where I was born. So allowed me to reach a wider audience for those that have taken my classes wanted to continue practicing and learning, so we sent out a monthly subscription box as I was saying and then there in each box, we do lettering tools, a lettering script and also a project, a hands-on project, so a little different each month. We also partner with a guest artist that allows us to really mix up our scripts and keep it just fun and fresh, so you're not always learning my same style, but okay, so there is my title and I like how that's looking, I'm gonna back this out just a little bit and see if you can see, yeah, and I kinda like the border in there. I'm gonna leave it pencil for now before I ink it, but I kinda like the border, so I might illustrate around the edges and I'm gonna go ahead and do the ingredient. So maybe with a pencil first. I'm grabbing this one, it's a little bit softer, this is my Moblique Infinity Pencil. It's meant to last, so you don't have to keep sharpening it and I'm quite surprised by it honestly, so I am going to do my let's see, just kind of a rough layout, one box. Devils. Bootcake mix. Two eggs. One third cup oil, I guess I could put vegetable oil to kind of balance it out. One third cup vegetable oil and then one bag of rolos. And then we might do a smaller here's the rolo cookies font, so I kinda wanna tie in like ingredients down here, but I think I'll just keep it on the line here, so in just wanna make sure I get it center. Sorry, I'm counting the letters to see where center is. So the D would be center, so that's pretty lined up. Okay, no, guys, I totally mixed that up, ingredients, these are the ingredients, I wanted to write instructions. This is what I get doing it on camera, instructions. Okay, I'm just kinda putting a mental note that that needs to slide over just a tad, my instructions. I'm just gonna start right here, stir the first three ingredients, so just to make sure I have room, and I think I will use this brown, hopefully I don't regret it, but I think I like it. And this is the Tombow Fudenosuke, it is a hard tip in the color set. I feel like this is a little blurry, let me come down a bit to focus for you. I'm gonna grab another brown out. Dry. But it could just be because I never used this color. That one's better. Two eggs. Oil and then one bag of rolos. So I don't know about you, but I enjoy baking when I have the time, it's kind of like being creative here, I have to sort of make the time. Lately, our family's been designating Sundays our dessert night, so I've been getting more baking in because I've been planning it, which that seems to be the case in my life, if I don't plan it just doesn't happen. And I don't, I don't mind cooking, but I much prefer baking, probably because we all enjoy sweet stuff a little more maybe. But I enjoy baking a lot. And cookies, who doesn't love cookies? Plus with my littles, they always love to help and cookies are something that's like manageable with littles. So I'm just adding some slight serifs to these letters. So they tie in with the title. So I hope if you run across this video, whether well, you'll probably be watching the replay, if you're not live now, but if you run across the replay, I hope this encourages you just to take a minute and slow down, take some time to create, do something just fun and creative for yourself. Okay, so the instructions, let's see, stir. Look, I think I grabbed the dry one again. I'm sorry about the quietness, I am just concentrating so I don't spell anything wrong, take a small amount. Do. And cover I thought about using my dip pen, that was something I pulled out and maybe like some sepia or walnut ink. So that was another option I considered for the brown. Okay, that worked out pretty good for those instructions. So I think I'll grab my eraser. I don't think I want to keep those lines after all, but that is something I might use in an upcoming design. I do think I like the, let me back this out, I do think I like the border around, but I'm not, I'm not going to completely decide on that yet, but I am going to erase these lines just so I can kinda see the layout. Okay, like I mentioned, I was wanting to use my pastels, so when I get everything on, I can add some shading to my ribbon and to the illustrations around the edges, so now I have to decide. I think I need something to kinda tie the this word in, maybe I should have done a smaller ribbon. Or maybe just like a little doodad, I don't know, you call it maybe like a little swash of some sort. Let's see, we could do like a cute, I don't know, let's see if we can do it opposite. Yeah, maybe that's cute. Maybe I'll regret it. Okay, then I need to go and add some designs around the edges and this is the part I struggle with because I am not much of an illustrator. I like pretty letters, but I really have to practice my illustrating, but I do like little doodles. But I do like little doodles, so I'm kind of thinking like a repeating pattern would be cute. But there, there's not a lot of ingredients in these cookies. So maybe this wasn't the best design for these cookies, but maybe it was. So our foodcake mix. Egg. An egg. Oil, should I draw the? Yeah, I do like the border because then I can kind of put stuff going in and out of the border. Should I draw the oil bottle? Like it's such like a universal design. Would say. Hmm, but I don't really love that. Zoom in here, oh yeah. I don't really like the bottle, let's just do a measuring cup. Let's see, with one third cup. And like I said, cause then it kind of comes out of the border, which I like. So the cake mix, the eggs, the oil and some rolos. Ink. One, if I want to do a whole bunch of tiny ones. Or actually, maybe first I will do like a whisk. And spatula. Um, because you don't have to use a mixer to mix these if you don't feel like it. Okay, you guys zoomed in too far. Okay, I think I like that and then I'm gonna keep going around. We need our bag of rolos. Maybe, I'm kind of thinking, put that gold in the corner. So let's do a bag here. I might need to look up the. Rolo logo. I don't think I remember it. Oh, it's just those red. Yeah, I was thinking it might be an oval, but yeah, it's just those red. Letters. Okay, and then I think I'm gonna do this kind of repeating pattern all the way around. So what I'm going to do is I do like the border. Said that a couple of times, sorry, I keep repeating that. But I'm convincing myself it would look cute in my head. So I'm going to. Put a border around. And I'm just using that pit artist pen again. I might go a little thicker if I had a thicker one handy. Or you could do like a double line border. Do whatever you like. Okay, I do love this banner. I'm not crazy about this. I should have put it in like a smaller ribbon, I think. I would have loved it better, but it's okay, it's gonna come together and. Looking good, okay, so I'm gonna go and. Do, what color are those? Devil's foodcake boxes. I see the Betty Crocker one in my head with, um, you know, she has a spoon on it. Yeah, she's red, okay, I had to double check. So I think I'm gonna draw the outline. Of these items. And then with the pastels, I can shade in. Okay, and most of her designs have like the title of the mix. Okay, so there's the foodcake mix. I'm going to add a big shape. And all the way around, I don't want this to be exact, I just want them to be similar. So it's gonna be a repeating pattern, but not like a, not a. Symmetrical is not the word, but not like a perfectly repeating pattern. Because I kind of want them staggered along this border. Spatula. And then a bag of rolos. And then, like I said, this recipe doesn't have very many ingredients, so I'm gonna go back to the cake box. And I'm gonna put it more coming out of. I'm gonna have to grab my pencil, so don't mix up this. More coming out of the. Border here. Some eggs, back to the measuring cup. So I might even do this one, um, looking down into it. The one third. And then to the whisks and the spatula. And again, I want the pastels added in, so. I will go back and. Shade and add more detail with the pastels. I always feel like I make these around St. Patrick's Day. Um, so you could have even done like a little rainbow or something if you want it to be more St. Patrick's type theme. Um, okay, special, let's go do another rolo bag. Maybe I'll just go straight up and down. And then we are back to the cake mix again. Excuse me. Some eggs. Measuring cup. Oops, off screen again, sorry about that. Let's see, measuring cup, let's do a whisk again. Put it here by the ribbon and the spatula. And then, so that's kind of what I meant by repeating pattern, where I'm going in order of all the ingredients, but it's not the exact same image. I thought maybe that's a cute sign and I'm liking how it turned out. Back to rolos. And then a cake mix again. Right, got a little wonky. Shape. Well, I might just put the one third there. My caliber, um, and then a whisk and a spatula. Spatula, then a bag of rolos. It worked out pretty perfectly. Okay, zoom way out, so you can see the whole design. I love that. Okay, so that is just an outline. I'm gonna go through now and erase all my pencil marks. Because once I lay the pastels down, I want to be able to do that. Have that be the, the finishing touch. And I know that with the pastels, you could put like a layer of hairspray or something you finish, um, just a little tip. You feel like you need that, or maybe your brand of pastels seems to be smearing a little more. Um, I, like I said, I haven't used these pastels before, so I'm excited to try them, but I have no idea how they'll react. There. Cute, I have a bit of a smudge here. Zoom back down. Right here on the. Break on here on the K, that might be hard to see, it's just a tiny smudge, but. I've shared with you guys before, I love my sandy racer and that will take off ink. So I just go in with my sandy racer, has enough grit to it to just really clean the page up. If you've got some ink smears, okay. So. Let's see, thinking here. And like I said, you have just been here to follow along with my thinking process. Don't exactly know, I, I had no idea how this was going to end up. I like how it's turning out. Um, okay, I just have to kind of clear my space. Oh, this is something I pulled out earlier. It is a guide line maker from Ink Me This. Um, if I wanted to make these exact, but I did eyeball those with the, uh, um, ruler, so I didn't end up using that. And just kind of clearing up for a little reset. Keep that brown out. And grab my pastels. So these are the master's touch branches from Hobby Lobby. Nothing super fancy, I probably bought them what on the, um, fifty percent off. I probably grabbed them while they were on sale. Um, but I have watched Harvest Crittenden. She is a master penman, extremely talented. Spent a lot of years perfecting her art and her craft and she makes everything just flow so effortlessly. But, um, I've seen her use pastels to enhance her work and I love, I just love the subtleness of it. So this is a nice egg color. And what I've learned is that you don't want to do the pastel directly onto your design. Um, and you don't need a lot. She had used Q-tips with hers, I'm kind of gonna try that method and see if that gives me enough color how I want it. So just come up here to these. This is a really white color, so I mean, you're not be able to see. Well, maybe, maybe it shows up just a tad, zoom in just a bit. Maybe my lights are too bright, if I turn them down. Still with that butt down, so you can see these light colors because, I mean, that's what we're going for is. You know, just a light touch. That's too light, I think. Wait, we'll try that. Okay, and I don't necessarily want these to be like perfect. We just want to add some color. So I'm shading the eggs. Okay, and then maybe I will grab. Let's see, my measuring cups, I mean, my measuring cups can be any color, really. I have like a multi-color tip, I'll just do, um, just do this blue color. Add some color. So you can see how you really don't need a lot and I can see why you don't want to put it directly on because that could really just make it too harsh. So yeah, let's make my little. Measuring cups blue. So you can see, I'm not, I'm not necessarily coloring it in perfectly. I'm just adding a fun texture and shade to that design. Um, I could have put like a piece of tape along here if I was real particular. We could have done a piece of tape. But I'm not gonna be that particular tonight, just because this is more flowing. I mean, and that's staying on there, good, once I've kind of rubbed it into the paper, that's, that's on there, good, so I like that. Um, okay, let's see, my spatulas are brown. Grab, well, I can use that edge. I'm just going to. Pull in some brown. 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 Throw in stuff. Then my whisks. Silver, uh gray, we can use this gray. Another pigment. And the gray is really light, so if I wanted to maybe, I don't think I wanna use the black. But if you were doing something else, you might want to try the black depending on your project. Okay, oops, there's a whisk. I don't really know that the gold flakes go with this at this point. Um, I'm looking at it now. I'm like, oh, we could have done the, we could have gilded the banner here. Um, and then done the lettering over top. That could have been something fun, but um, I can't tell if this is like a permanent. Uh, I'm sorry, I was reading that. It looks more pink than red, but I think it's gonna be our red. So pick up some red and color these boxes. I'm kinda seeing if I can write the letters with it. It's too thick to really do that, but I don't think I wanna write them with like a red um pen. It would just be too harsh for this design if you like. So I'm just gonna do that, I think, like that. A little more brown for the robo bags. And I'm starting to think about my um banner here. What color? I wanna do it, oops. Had some dust there that I just, we can't see it. Had some something that spread across the page. Must have been some pastel pieces. Okay, I need to add another color to my box. I think they're just kind of um brown, but I do this like a sienna color, so I don't have so much brown on the design. Yeah, I like that. Okay, so just really delicate touches, and I like, I really like how it turns out. Okay, and then I'm gonna add a touch of color to this word and the ribbon. Um, let me back up here so you can see what I've got going on. There we go. Um, I mean, I'm gonna do some shading, shading in the corners here, maybe so it kind of, or I might do the shading on this side so that that white center stands out. So what color have we really used? Maybe a green or a purple. Let's see, let's put or yellow. No, not yellow. That'd be way too late. Let's here, let's go with this green, why not? Give me quite a bit. And my thought is to pick up this pigment, kinda go heavy on the edges here or on the corners. Yeah, that's a nice green. Then more lighter up long. Hmm, I like that shadow. Like how that turned out. I'm gonna grab a clean Q-tip and just kinda blend it out. So it all just blends nicely. Okay, my egg got a little green over here. The sand eraser is working perfectly for um these. We got about five minutes left. Let's see. That looks good. I'm gonna add a color to the ribbon. Let's maybe do, we haven't, I love purple, so let's grab some purple. That would just kinda look nice. I definitely like using the Q-tip so that it doesn't just sit so harsh on the page. A little heavier right here on those bends of the ribbon. And just ever so slightly adding some purple across. Just a touch. Looks good. And then I wanna come down and tie this in. Again, just really slight. Now I've gotten on a little too heavy right there. I don't know, I love, I actually really love this design. I think um I yeah, I think I will, I just like it. I think I'm gonna add just a touch of gold to finish it up because, I mean, they're rolo cookies. We gotta have a touch right because of those wrappers. That would just be fun. It would have been even funner if I had some wrappers. We could have just added those gold touches. So what I like to do um, I just grab a regular old glue stick to keep my foil flakes, the ones that I brush off after gilding. I keep them and for projects like this. Guys, we're gonna keep it right at an hour. I'm so proud of myself because I could sit here for several hours and make this. Some of my pretty pastels. I love these. Again, these were just the Masters Touch from Hobby Lobby, but um a really good result. If you really wanted to get into this, we could have gilded the border too. That could have been really cool with a uh, what's it called? Oh, a ruling pen. Um, you can guild, you can get a nice straight line with a ruling pen, so that could have been something fun. I'm gonna lighten this purple up just a tad. Love it. What do you think? I'm gonna turn it so you guys can kinda see the whole thing. Okay. And I like the white standing out in the middle, and then I'm just going to, oh, I was clearing this so that I could open it. And I'm just gonna put like small touches of gold, not like just one two three. Of course, that's for just little spots on that edge. Nothing, nothing extreme. It's just simply a touch. Have my brush handy. I'll grab it though. I'm gonna let those just dry enough that I can brush them off. I might go longer right there and more in the corner. This has been so fun for me. I honestly, if you've been watching to to the end, I have had five hundred thousand things I need to do tonight, but the truth is we're always gonna have five hundred thousand things we need to do every night. So the laundry and the dishes and packing for my event tomorrow can just wait because I needed this creative session with, you know, I I do a lot of work for other people. Um, so I don't make a lot of time be creative for myself, so I loved this um hour just to myself. Kids are in bed. Okay, so it doesn't take long for the gold to adhere. I mean, not long at all, even if you're using the full gilding system, it doesn't take long. Let me grab my dry brush. I'm just gonna brush those scraps away. I'm not sure where my flat brush is, but this'll give us and that is just subtle enough that I like, I like it, how it turned out. I'm just brushing away where the gold wasn't sitting. It gets everywhere. I'll link in the supplies below what I used, but um, there you go, just a touch of gold. To tie those rollos in with, I think that's pretty fun. There's a little bit there, I can brush off. Alright guys, I love it. I hope if, again, if you're watching this, I hope you just enjoyed an hour to yourself, either watching this um or creating along with me. You can tag me, Simple Lettered Studio, and show me what you made. Um, or hop over to the Facebook page right at the top. There is a pinned post that will say virtual recipe exchange. You can post yours there and share with us if you're up for it. And yeah, I'm always open for questions, so don't hesitate to reach out and give me any suggestions for supplies you want to see me try next week. There's plenty out there that I have never tried, so um, let me know if you, or not next week, next month, let me know if you want to see um any designs or supplies used next month, and I look forward to it. Um, this scheduled time out to just create. So thank you for following along, everybody. I will catch you next month.